Welcome to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board Meeting for January 21st, 2025. Will you all please rise and join me?
How's it going there? You snuck in there, I didn't even see.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with a roll call, starting with John. John Jevonoli.
John Papri.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Miyoshi.
Sarah Blitso.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are February 18th, 2025, and March 18th, 2025. We have minutes from our December 17th, 2024 meeting. Could I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For anyone who has seen the agenda for this evening, I just want to quickly explain, it's a three-page agenda, but there's only a couple of things that we're actually going to be talking about tonight. We decided to include projects that have either not yet been approved or not yet withdrawn, so that we have a method of keeping track of what we've seen and what we may see in the future. Do you have anything to add to that, Scott?
I think that sums it up, yeah.
Got it, great.
John, is that going to be an ongoing thing that we do, or just once a year?
No, ongoing.
Ongoing, yes.
Great, thank you.
After this meeting, by the way, after we adjourn, we are going to have a brief presentation on some zoning changes that are being proposed. Michelle will give us a rundown on that. The public doesn't have to stay, it's really primarily for the planning board, but you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like. So we'll start this evening with another presentation by Michelle Robbins on the scoping process.
Right. So I just wanted, I know that for some of the planning board members, they're either new, or you haven't seen an EIS in a long time, so I just wanted to go really quickly through where we are in the process and just remind you of your role and sort of the things that you need to understand about SEACER and where we are as far as tonight, where you're considering adopting a scope for the environmental impact statement.
Pick up your feet.
I figured, that's why I'm waiting.
We have to kind of move around, so we can make sure we stay out of the way of the vacuum cleaner, right?
All right, so it's understanding and applying the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So when you hear everyone speak of SEACER, that's what SEACER stands for, State Environmental Quality Review Act. Sometimes people shorten it to SEACER, which just means State Environmental Quality Review. So what is SEACER? It stands for State Environmental Quality Review Act. And in the context of tonight and the application that we're considering tonight, which is Woodland Estates, it would be site plan approval and subdivision. And basically, it means that before a local government can approve a site plan or subdivision, they must first conduct a review under SEACER to assess the potential environmental impacts of the proposed development and consider them alongside social and economic factors before making a decision. So SEACER, essentially, SEACER requires governmental agencies to balance the potential adverse environmental impacts of an action against the social and economic benefits of the action. So it's a balancing process. The purpose of SEACER is to incorporate environmental factors into an agency's decision-making process at the earliest possible opportunity. In this case, you are the lead agency, the planning board. It seeks to balance impacts of physical environment and community resources. Impacts can be either during construction or implementation of the project, and it can be ongoing for the life of the project. In the context of SEACER, when you hear something has a significant adverse environmental impact, environment can mean many different things. It can mean natural resources and features, it can mean human things, like an odor or an air quality, noise. It could be physical, agricultural, a social impact, an economic impact, historical impact, a visual or community character impact, traffic and community services, as well as other So SEACER is a process specific to New York State. It comes out of the National Environmental Policy Act, which required that agencies consider environmental impacts before making a decision or an approval. And basically, SEACER is New York State's implementation of the National Environmental Policy Act. It's a comprehensive assessment tool. It identifies possible impacts, it describes possible mitigation, coordinates review with other agencies that require permits or approvals. So in this particular case, in Woodland Estates, we're not the only agency that might have an approval or permitting requirement. DOT, New York State DEC, all of those different agencies could also have approvals. And basically, SEACER allows for the lead agency to coordinate with any other agency that might have a permit or approval, and it makes it so that the environmental review process can be more efficient. In other words, everything's collected in one location and everyone gets the same information. What SEACER is not, it is not a permit, it is not an enforcement tool that's left to the courts, it's not intended to assess every conceivable impact, and it's not a substitute for other reviews. So in addition to a SEACER review, this project will also have site plan subdivision. So who uses SEACER? Local municipalities, towns and villages, town boards, planning departments, review boards, planning boards, zoning boards, regional governments and agencies like the county and state agencies will also use SEACER when they're making their decisions. There's a lot of different common SEACER terms that you'll hear: action, lead agency, EIF, which is environmental assessment form. I'm going to actually go over most of these terms in the next slide, so I'm going to skip to the next slide. So I tried to, this is sort of a visual of the SEACER process, and starting at the top, the SEACER process starts with classifying an action. And it basically means there's three different routes it can take. You can have a type-one action, which are actions that are more likely to result in a significant adverse impact. You can have an unlisted action, and you can have a type-two action. And type-two actions are at the other extreme of type-one, which they are actions that are unlikely to result in any significant adverse impacts, and typically, if something is type-two'd, basically, that ends the SEACER process. Unlisted actions are common among, you probably see those most often from the planning board. It could be something like a small site plan, or an amendment to a site plan could go under an unlisted action. A smaller subdivision can be an unlisted action. Typically, unlisted actions are not coordinated. Type-one actions are coordinated, although unlisted actions could also be coordinated. But I wanted to show, basically, the root of the Woodland Estates action, and the Woodland Estates is following the orange path. And the reason this is important is I kind of wanted to describe visually where we are and all the things that still have to happen in this process. So just so you know, when the application came into the planning board, it comes in with an EAF, which is an environmental assessment form, and that sort of describes the potential environmental impacts the project could have. It describes, you know, roughly what the trip generation will be for the traffic, it describes potentially how many acres might be disturbed as part of the project, it can describe if there's any wetlands on the site or any significant habitats on the site. And then, once you read all of that, the lead agency has to determine whether or not it's going to be a type-one, an unlisted, or a type-two action. In this case, we determined that it would be a type-one action because it could potentially result in significant adverse impacts. A full EAF was completed, and we decided we needed to coordinate the review because there'd be other agencies that might have permits or approvals related to this project. We reviewed the criteria and the EAF, and we determined that we were going to posdeck the project because it had the potential for environmental impacts. And after we posdecked it, we went into what we call scoping, and that's the process we're at right now. And scoping is basically the outline for the EIS. It goes into the different topics and technical areas that are going to have to be studied in the environmental impact statement. So it could be traffic, schools, land use, zoning, air quality, noise. It can go to community character and visual impacts and all the different things that we've talked about at the meetings. And basically, the applicant puts together the scope, and the lead agency reviews the scope. In our case, we actually also had a public hearing on the scope, and we allowed for public comment, and we took public comments on the scoping document. And that's where we are right now. Tonight, you guys are going to be asked to consider the scope that's in front of you, and you're being asked by the applicant to approve it, so that they can start moving forward with the EIS and start studying all the things that they have to study, such as the traffic and the wetlands and the habitats, and get all that information organized into an environmental impact statement for you to review. So we're located right here at scoping, and then, once the scoping is complete, the applicant goes off and compiles all the information in the draft environmental impact statement. And this is kind of a condensed version of this, but there are, you know, this can take months, and it sort of depends on the applicant's, how quickly they can get the information, and then how quickly they can respond to any comments or concerns from the lead agency or the public. Once the environmental impact statement is completed, it goes to a review by you guys, and you'll determine whether or not it's complete to the scope. So you'll take the scoping document that you're being asked to consider tonight to adopt, and you'll look at the scoping document, and you'll look at the EIS, and you'll determine whether or not the EIS includes all of the information that it was supposed to include per the scope. Once you've determined that it's complete enough for public review, it goes out to the public, it gets distributed to all the involved agencies, any of the agencies that might have permit or approval authority with the project, and everybody reviews it. And then it comes back for a public hearing on the draft environmental impact statement, at which time the public would be asked to comment on the document itself. Then, and again, this can take, you know, it can take months, it can take weeks, it can take years, depending on how much information is in the scoping document, how quickly the applicant can provide the information to the planning board, and how in-depth it is. And if during the process, for example, they do a traffic study, and based on the information that comes back in the traffic study, it looks like maybe there might be another location that could have an impact, they could also have to add additional information as part of the review, or not. So there's many different ways that this can, you know, can go, and that's why it's sort of hard to graphically show it, but right now, this is just a simplistic description of how it proceeds, the SEACER process. Then it goes to the preparation of a final environmental impact statement, which is essentially a catalog of every single public comment that was received on the EIS, and the applicant must respond to all those comments. And that gets put into the document. Sometimes there are additional studies that need to be done in the final environmental impact statement, sometimes not. And then ultimately, you get to a point where you do a finding statement, where the lead agency makes findings on the project, and the project is, it's either determined that the applicant, that you're going to approve the project or disapprove of the project. And sometimes you'll approve it with conditions, sometimes you'll modify the project in some way to mitigate for any impacts you see. And usually, the modification or the avoidance of impacts is kind of happening during the process, because at the same time that you're doing the SEACER review, we're also starting the site plan and subdivision application process. And this is, graphic kind of shows you how these two processes happen simultaneously. The important thing to know is that you cannot approve a site plan or subdivision without SEACER being complete. So the site plan and subdivision process is sort of happening from this point through the finding statement. They're kind of, a lot of times, going along simultaneously in front of you, coming to see you, and the SEACER process is sometimes informing the site plan subdivision process. So, for example, you're realizing, when you're looking at the site plan, that the building is going to be located here, and may be near a neighbor, for example, and you're asking the, during the SEACER process, for them to do some visual assessment, and through the visual assessment done in the SEACER process, you recognize that there could be the potential for an environmental impact visually. And that can be shown through the SEACER process, and maybe you then adjust the site plan or subdivision plan to modify to avoid that impact. And that sort of, so the SEACER process is informing the site plan subdivision process along the way. And eventually, once the SEACER process is complete through findings, then you typically go into the, sort of, the end process of the subdivision site plan or beginning. In the case of Montage and Summit Woods, which you guys, was the last time we went through the EIS process, we completed the EIS, and then now we're going through the subdivision process, so we sort of, those were very separate processes, but sometimes they can run concurrently. And of course, the site plan subdivision process can be one or up to several meetings, depending on the complexity, scale, and scope of the project, and in this case, they'll be before us several times, likely, and they will also have to have a public hearing for the site plan. And then, I just put a few resources here. I think in your packet, you have the SEACER cookbook, which is kind of a shortened, it sort of describes all the different steps in a shortened way, and it's very helpful, and you can kind of refer to it. And there's a lot of, also, there's a lot of timing requirements through SEACER, which we have to, as a lead agency, pay attention to. I'll be paying attention to that, and Michael will be paying attention to that, so you won't have to worry about that so much, but just know that there are definitely time requirements in some cases, and there's, you know, for example, once you declare a lead agency, you have to wait at least 30, once you declare your intent-to-be lead agency, you have to wait 30 days to allow the other agencies time to respond to that declaration. So there's all these little built-in timeframes, and we'll be following all of those. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions by any board members?
Michelle, just one question. I think the applicants require, right, to keep a website with all the current documentation. Does that have to be updated as they're developing the draft EIS, or do they wait till they're ready to present the document back to the planning board? How does that typically happen?
Well, I think the first time you'll see the EIS, I mean, I'll check with Terry, but I'm pretty sure that they'll probably wait and do it until it's submitted for completeness.
Okay.
That'll be the first time, and then that won't necessarily mean that you've agreed that it's complete. They'll probably put the draft up, and then you guys will review it and determine whether or not you think it's complete per the scope, the content in the scope. And then, once that happens, you could see a couple iterations of the document. The EIS sometimes has to be revised, and then it goes back and forth a couple times between the lead agency and the applicant, and then it gets posted, and then, once it gets circulated to all the involved agencies, then it's, actually, we usually put a copy in the library as well, in addition to having it on the website.
Thank you.
It's not typical to show in progress.
That's fair.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you again, Michelle. So the first item on the agenda is Woodland Estates, and before we consider adoption of the scope, I just want to acknowledge all of the input that was given by residents over two evenings of public scoping hearings that we had in November and December, very thoughtful comments by residents. After that, we invited the residents, if they chose to, to submit written comments, and I read 51 emails. They were all, they continued the same kinds of thoughtful comments, and we even received three after the deadline, but those have also been entered into the public record and have been passed on to the applicants. So everyone has been heard of the 54 respondents that came through with written comments. Do you have anything to add to that, Terry?
No. Again, Terry Hahn, principal of LADAPC, were the planners for the project. No, all of the comments were integrated. We went through what they were, categorized them, checked them against what was already in the scoping document, and then indicated you should have gotten a red copy. It's not a red line copy, it's just showing where all the additions were based on those comments. There were many, so as is typical, we put it out for first shot, and then we'll see what happens, and so the current version that you have reflects all those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I also want to read into the record a letter that we received from Supervisor Del Sandro. He wrote this letter on December 17th on behalf of himself and the rest of the town board, and I think it's important to go ahead and read the entire thing. I was going to try to summarize it, but I'm going to read the whole thing. "I write this letter to you on behalf of the town board and myself to provide comments with respect to the, excuse me, proposal known as Woodland Estates. The town board members and I have reviewed the planning board's November 19th, 2024 scoping public hearing that was conducted per the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Our residents provided heartfelt and insightful comments which inspired us to provide this comment letter on the scope of the review. I ask that you please read this letter into the record during the next public scoping session, and below are our comments. Land use, zoning, and public policy. This project has been proposed in many iterations for approximately four decades, and the underlying zoning requirements have changed multiple times. I agree with our residents who mentioned that all of these zoning and land use acronyms make it very difficult for people to follow the discussion. It feels at times like land use professionals are speaking an entirely different language. The town respects property rights, including those of the developer, and importantly, the rights of the surrounding community members. I think it's important to note that the town has been advised by its retained land use council that there's still questions given the long and winding history of this project as to what the applicant actually has vested rights to build. The applicant should clearly document the history of approvals, the zoning that was in place at the time of each approval, and why the applicant believes that its proposals permitted per the town code. B, community character visual resources. The town takes its motto of East Fishkill being a great place to live very seriously. I was particularly struck by the testimony of one of our residents, who was a veteran, completed multiple tours overseas, and is worried about the proposal disturbing her tranquil home. The applicant should provide architectural renderings of what the proposal would look like if built, and also how this project would be screened from the surrounding neighbors. C, geology, soils, topography, and steep slopes. The applicant should provide an estimate of how much fill would be brought in and, brought to and from the site. Our residents need to understand the number of trucks, trips that this would equal. It would also be critical for the applicant to provide erosion and slope stabilization plans. Finally, would there be any blasting, question mark? This is a residential community, and it is critical that these residents not be disturbed with loud explosions. L, fiscal and economic conditions. The applicant should provide a full fiscal analysis of proposed tax benefits to the town against proposed costs. While the town has been extremely successful in fulfilling its vision to broaden the tax base with commercial properties to lower the tax burden of the residents, this proposal should be studied to ensure that it is not a net negative to the town. Historic and cultural, the applicant should submit an archaeological study to ensure that it will not be disturbing any existing resources. Also, would any aspects of the community be open to the public, question mark? Construction. The applicant needs to provide an accurate construction schedule. What type of construction phasing, if any, is the applicant proposing, question mark? The town needs to have an accurate number of construction vehicles that will be arriving per day. In addition, one of our residents was concerned about what sorts of performance bonds would be provided by the applicant. The applicant should provide examples of its completed construction projects, what bonds were provided to the town, and confirmation that it has not begun projects in the past without completing them, leaving a mess for the municipality to clean up. Conclusion. I want to thank you and the planning board members for devoting the time to the town for this and other matters. The town board and I respect private property rights, but I want to emphasize again, this means respect for both the applicant's property rights and also the private property rights of peace and quiet enjoyment for our residents. The town board and I will continue to actively review this process and reserve right for further comment as we proceed with the proposal. Very truly yours, Nicholas Del Sandro." So with that, I guess I'd like to open up discussion for the board members. Do you have any comments or questions for the applicant with regards to the scoping document as it's been presented? I did have a couple of things that I noted that I wanted to suggest. You include a number of streets for doing view analyses. Two that I did not see there that I thought maybe deserved to be considered. One, particularly, is Steven Drive.
We seem to have, that fell off, but it was always on intention.
Excellent. And then, Van Flack Road seems to be relatively close and is worthy of some consideration.
Sure, we can add that in as well.
Okay. And then, my only other item has to do with the last paragraph of the supervisor's letter, where he does ask for some history on prior projects and their completion and that sort of thing, so.
We did include all of the information from the supervisor's letter in here.
Okay.
The, yeah, I believe that most of all of that is in place.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Was there anything that was not incorporated from our prior comments? I didn't get a chance to read the most recent draft, I read the middle one.
I think we incorporated pretty much, and we went through all the comments, and anything that wasn't addressed or wouldn't have been addressed through the original scoping document, we added to.
Okay.
We also included, there was a letter from Scott Bryant, and also, there was one previously from Renia, so all of those got integrated as well.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, if there are any questions or comments by our professionals?
My only comment is just to emphasize again, all the board is voting on tonight is just what will be studied. They're not voting to say whether the studies are sufficient, whether the project's approved, it's just the list of studies that will actually occur.
Typically, about this time, somebody will ask me, how long do I think it's going to take to do this? My client would tell you, it'll be a shorter period of time than what I would tell you, so they may want me to say, like, six months, but in reality, nine months. It's going to take a while. This is a very in-depth document, requiring significant studies that need to be, that need to occur, that may or may not have an impact on the final site design. The final site design will be part of the scope, the DEIS, which will reflect all of these various different reports. So, takes a while.
Got it, thank you for that. Pressure's on, isn't it? So if there are no other comments or questions, I will accept a motion to adopt the scope for Woodland Estates' draft environmental impact statement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good.
So our next step is to finalize the, what we call the black line version of this document. It will, we'll take the previous versions off of our website, post the final scope as final scope, and then it gets circulated to all of the various different agencies as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Stormville Square.
This is the Stormville Square site plan. I'll give you the updates that we've had since our last planning board meeting. I think one of the big ones was, is that there was a recommendation for some additional handicap parking on the northern side of the building, so we revised the parking to show crosswalk for that northern handicap parking area. There was a request for sidewalks from the proposed building down toward the front of the site, so we incorporated the sidewalk on the southern side of the access road leading toward the proposed building. And then we widened the access aisles around the building. We used to have some parallel parking alongside the building, both north and south, to increase turning truck radius approaches. We removed those spaces and we added them toward the center of the parcel, so it really opened up circulation around the building. One of the things that we've been working on, and the applicant's been working with the town engineer, is a pump station for sewer. We had the generator and the control panel near the entrance of the building, or the entrance of the site. Obviously, aesthetics are going to come into play, so we are going to be working with the town engineer to possibly, you know, have the pump station somewhere near the front. Final location hasn't been decided yet, but in effort to obviously conceal any mechanicals associated with that pump station, you know, through screening and whatnot, there was a thought that maybe we would place the mechanicals behind the existing building with anisement. Again, these are just thoughts right now, but will be finalized with the town engineer. Again, these are just thoughts right now, but will be finalized with the town engineering department as we work with them, but ultimately tying into the sewer system over at Four Corners. We do have survey that leads down toward that corridor. We can provide that in an updated plan set just to show you the location, but again, to reiterate, we're going down Phillips Road, down 216, down to Phillips Road, and down Presmon, into the Four Corners Sewer Treatment Plant. All of that work will be done in there right away. That work is largely going to be directional drilling, so there'll be no impact, or relatively minor impact, associated with that construction. Other than that, we had some renderings. We had a submit for the ARC, which we'll provide. And the architectural style matches the previous versions that were submitted. Here's our floor plan layout. We were asked to provide some door locations. Again, we're all on, we're slab on grade here, and we'll have doors both front and back. There may be an outdoor seating area associated with this site in the front. We don't know yet, we don't have any tenants. Again, this is subject to largely Board of Health approval and that sewer treatment connection. So, as far as what exact use is going to be in here, office, retail, possibly a restaurant, there may be some outdoor seating. Right now, we don't know. But if there is a restaurant that would come in, we'd probably come back for approval on that individually. But for right now, just because of the lack of tenant space, or tenant lease contracts, that we're not going to, we just don't know what's going to be in there.
Hey, Brian, can you just go back to that one for a second? The two buildings in the upper corners, how are they going to be accessed? Are they accessed within the courtyard or outside the courtyard? Because I don't see how they would be accessed from within the courtyard.
There's probably going to be, these were just trying to show, I think, exterior door locations, but there'll probably be some kind of corridor in these two locations.
Vestibule or something like that, so you'll still, you don't have to go outside and around the building to get, okay.
Right, right. There'll be some kind of vestibule in there. And right now, the building plans that we have, it's basically a core and shell type of setup, where we're just focusing on the shell of the building. Internals will work out as tenants become available. And that's where you get into your plumbing and your electrical routing, be like on a fit-up base.
Just like a strip mall. You'll get a building, a CO for the shell, right? And then, it'll be individual fit-outs, I imagine.
Right, so when this goes up, like, they're not going to pour the concrete floor, it'll be open, so that if specific tenants come in, plumbing can be routed, bathrooms can be positioned. But we'll have the main infrastructure in place, which is like your sewer line out, you know, and your electrical panel coming in, things like that. And then, just taking a look at the renderings, they're very similar to what we proposed in our original, past approvals. You know, zoom in here so you can see. We have a list of, zoom down here so you guys can see it. We're going with, you know, a gray shingle. We had some wood trim highlights. We're going with the black windows, exterior vinyl white trim. We'll have some stone along the front, and some architectural fixtures along the front for lighting. But this is, this is the same carryover from our previous approval. And then, looking at, if we go back to the site plan, we've made some improvements to lighting and landscaping. We incorporated some flowering trees as recommended, and we did a staggered landscape buffer to our residential component to the, to the south. As you can see here, here's our landscape, we did some staggered landscaping, we did some flowering trees inside the parking areas. But we're hopefully at a point now where we could open this up to some public comment on this latest update.
Okay, other questions by board members? Questions or comments from our professionals? Anything? So, are we ready to consider a public hearing for the project at our next meeting?
He just wants to...
I'm sorry, Dave's got a comment. Dave, I apologize.
Sorry.
Yeah, our concern was with the, and this is not just for this project, but it's kind of because of the way we've done fire lanes townwide. When they draw a fire lane and make it three, four feet wide along the edge of the building, and they put an ending line stripe on the crosshatches, anything beyond that is not a fire lane, and can't, no one can be siding, which means they're going to be parked, they could park basically in the middle of the roadway and not be in the fire lane legally. What we would like to see is some way to assure that that whole roadway is actually a fire lane and has access.
You could do that.
Got it.
You could do that through, work with your department with some signage and whatnot to ensure that that remains open.
Sounds like maybe striping on the road as well, though, is what you're talking about, not just signs, but striping, road striping.
The depth of travel.
Right. And because there are exit doors from the individual units that was depicted anyway, people could park there, run stuff in and out, or whatever.
Okay. Yeah, we'll address that, we'll add signage, and additional details to hopefully prevent against that.
And Brian, if you do go with a food court, we'd have to see bollards or something to protect that area from visits.
Straight up the road.
Yeah, right. In talking to the applicant, just because he has experience with outdoor seating, I think that's, if we did pursue the restaurant avenue, we'd probably come in with amended plan specific to that restaurant area that would detail those elements, just because right now, we don't know where things are going to be, but the applicant is aware of those requirements for outdoor seating.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
Brian, have you, I'm sorry, I don't recall, have you already taken this iteration of the building to the ARC? Been in front of them yet?
We submitted an application. I think I gave that to Jackie, right?
It's next week. When are you, do you know when you're due on then?
Is that next week?
This month, he's going this month.
Okay, I just want to make sure it coincides with one week.
February, I should say.
Because the public hearing for the site plan will also be the public hearing for them, so I just want to make sure it's underway.
And do I recall correctly that this is substantially kind of the same exterior elevation that you had in the prior building that was approved?
Yep, same color, same design elements.
Got it. Okay. So, will you be ready for a public hearing at our February 18th meeting?
I will.
So, I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing for Stormville Square for February 18th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Thank you. I think I got the next one.
Okay, the last, good. The last item on the agenda is Jackson, 149 Jackson Road.
So, this is, this is a lot line realignment and subdivision. We're starting with two lots, we're going to end with three lots. Two of the lots right now have existing dwellings on them. We're basically taking from, a little bit from each piece to create that third lot, which is proposed in the back. Some of the, we've made some Board of Health updates, we just received some additional survey. Specific to this application, we just did some soil tests for the, for the larger piece, since it has an existing septic. We've been out there with the Health Department, we're going to be doing a replacement septic area for the existing house that's out there, it's just part of Board of Health requirements. But we've had, had an initial review by the Health Department. The changes that were requested are shown on this plan and also in process with that larger lot and their septic system. We did drop a copy of the site plan off to the Highway Department, based upon our site distance counts, which I think was a layering issue, they were actually on a visible layer, but we do have adequate site distance, and we'll just confirm that with the Highway Department. I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
They are confirming, or they confirmed you have a site distance?
We, we put the site distance on the plan, and we meet it by code. It's just we dropped a copy off to the Highway Department, we haven't had any confirmation, but we'd like to make approval subject to their review.
Okay, and the board will remember that we previously did decide this is a minor subdivision, and we waived the requirement for a public hearing. But are there any questions or comments?
I just had one question. I noted, you've probably corrected this in your new iteration, but is the new lot going to be 1.83 or 1.5? I saw there was, I think there's a little bit of discrepancy on the plan, and we just need to make sure that whatever I have in the resolution is correct, okay?
I think it's a 3.
Okay, perfect. I think that's what I put in the resolution.
Okay. It is. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will read the resolution. Resolution of Lot Line Realignment and Subdivision Approval. Subdivision plat is name is Jackson, name of applicant, Daniel and Rachel Jackson, whereas the applicant has applied for a subdivision and lot line realignment of two existing lots totaling five acres to create a new lot for a total of three lots, whereas Lot 1 is three acres in size and is proposed to be 2.17 acres. Lot 2 is two acres in size and proposed to be one acre. And the new Lot 3 will be created from the remaining 1.83 acres and the realignment of the lot line dividing the two existing lots. Whereas the planning board determined the proposed subdivision and lot line realignment is a minor subdivision, waived the requirement for a public hearing, whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under SEACR, whereas the planning board adopted a negative declaration for the proposed subdivision and lot line realignment on January 21st, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved, if the planning board hereby issues final subdivision and lot line realignment approval for the above project is represented on a map entitled Jackson Lot Line Realignment and Subdivision prepared by Dan Stokosa Engineering PC dated July 23rd, 2024, and last revised November 26th, 2024, subject to the conditions set forth below. Satisfactory resolution of comments in the RENIA review letter dated December 17th, driveway approval for the new flag lot from the East Fishkill Highway Department, approval from the Dutchess County Department of Health. Final plat will contain the written approval of the Dutchess County Department of Health before it is signed by the chairperson, and recreation fees in the amount of $6,000 due prior to the signing of the subdivision plat. Be it further resolved or within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner. This resolution was given by John Eichman, may I have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Manoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bloodso.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Don Pepe.
Aye.
John J. Vignoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carries.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
A good night.
Good night. So, before we adjourn and go to the informal session regarding zoning, is there any other business to be brought before the planning board? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.